Thank you, everybody. Welcome, everyone. Tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Understand, we have some trouble speaking through these microphones, so council members, just be sure you speak directly to it and we'll hopefully get through that. Lillian, your is straight up.
Yes.
Okay. I'm kind of learning how to work this new arrangement, so please bear with us. So at this time, I'd like to call Councilman Fleming for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. The kind and gracious God, we truly thank you for the blessings of life and health. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our staff. More importantly, we thank you for the world. We ask that you will be with us and stand by us as we prepare for this Memorial Day, as we prepare to celebrate the life of those that have been lost who served our country, the men and women. We ask that you will still be with us as we continue to pray for those who are still serving us, who are still working on our police departments, our fire departments, and other areas of service for our communities. But we especially ask for your tender hands of love. We ask for you to be merciful and kind to us. Please touch our hearts with more caring, more love, and much more brotherhood, and remove the hatred in our land. We ask again, Lord, that you will continue to bless us and keep us humble in your name. Please bless us as we do those things in your will that are pleasing in your sight this evening. These and all other blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Flags over here. Have a pledge.
The release to that of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming. Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Bresington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy DeWorke.
Excuse me. Dorothy Dow? Is it the day I've often waited?
Rumor, the rumors have gotten out.
Sorry, there's a little levity there, but Councilmember Dorothy Dow, she's here, Mayor Knox White.
Here. That's the first time that's been done in 25 years. I don't think anybody's ever done that. Macon, there's a headline for you.
We just talked about land management. That was called merging intersections.
You have before you the minutes of April, excuse me, May 10, 2021, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. Let's make sure the minutes next month, next week are correct also. Camilla. Alrighty, we have a number of folks. We have a tradition letting folks speak to us for about three minutes. Do we have our three-minute clock here? What do we do? Where is it?
They show it.
How's that work? Okay, we have a three-minute roll. Please abide by that three-minute rule. And a number of folks can speak on really any topic, but do watch the monitor for that. But I do want to recognize upfront, we have special guests with us tonight. He is an original investor and adopter, if you will, of Unity Park, which is near and dear to my heart, doing something when no one else thought it was a smart thing to do, but it was a very smart thing to do. Then he went on to become our Congressman, William Timmons. So William, I want to recognize you. If you want to say a few words, you may. Oh, Mike, you don't want to say a few words. Are you sure? Okay. He's back with us from the war zone, but we appreciate that. Thank you. We have a number of folks who signed up to speak to us on a couple of topics. Again, we just finished budget sessions and land use sessions and things like that, and we have a pretty robust agenda tonight, so please keep that in mind. We have a number of folks who signed up to speak on the subject of Wings of the City statues, I see. I'm going to take those folks up front. We have a couple of things on some other topics too, but I'm going to take those up front. I'll ask everyone to understand on this issue, I saw the notes from the last meeting, that people disagree on this topic. This project was approved by the City Public Arts Commission, which is made up of City of Greenville residents. It was embedded by a number of other committees after that. It is sponsored, by the way, by BMW, by Michelin, by Bank of America, and by Bonscours Saint Francis, and has been very well received in our community and is a city that has long supported public art in our community. It's something we're very proud of. We think the exhibit is a great exhibit. And obviously, some people disagree in terms of what they see in that exhibit. But I want to use the word respect. I respect the views, and I told this to the speaker originally, who appeared before us several weeks ago, I respect her sincerely, sincerely held point of view and perspective on the matter, but I have to say everyone needs to respect the other point of view as well, because whether it's the Carolina Foothills Garden Club, the people who basically made Falls Park happen in the first place, or the Orange County Public Places Committee, these folks vetted these things very well, and they have a different point of view. And the thousands and thousands of people who come down to the park every weekend clearly have a different point of view, and I expect people to respect that point of view as well as we respect the other point of view. So with that in mind, please keep in mind the three minutes and respectful behavior is always expected at a Greenville City Council meeting. How about that, Congressman Timmons? Something you don't hear everywhere. We have a number of folks assigned to speak, and I'll take Mr. Todd Frederick at this time. Please give your address, if you will, please.
Your address is 434 Piedmont Highway, Piedmont, South Carolina, 2967.
Can anybody hear him?
Cancel a little fast.
Okay, I could hear you, but I didn't know.
I'll have to do auctioneer style with three minutes.
I think that's good.
So yeah, it's 434 Piedmont Highway, Piedmont, South Carolina, 29673 Greenville County.
I think we got you. Okay. You don't be intimidated by those big numbers.
Oh, yeah. Can I get that restarted?
That's okay. We'll make up for it.
Okay. Well, a month ago, I wasn't too surprised at the news of the wing naked statues coming to the Greenville County, Greenville City, given how Mayor Knox White and City Council have shown a history dating back to 1996 of embracing sexual deviances. Mayor Knox White and City Council opposed the Greenville County Council's pro-family resolution, which stated that homosexuality was, quote, incompatible with the standards to the which this community subscribes. They then, City Council welcomed these incompatibles to march in our cities to protest the pro-family resolution. The mayor and the City Council permitted the Olympic torch to pass through the City of Greenville, even though the ACOG had boycotted Greenville County for its statement support of traditional family values. Also, the City of Greenville welcomed the Chinese Communist Party Olympic team to come practice at the auditorium, thus embracing communism. The, speaking of ill effects of nudity in statues, Wade Cleveland, former chairman of the Greenville County Council, was who opposed the pro-family resolution in 2007, himself was arrested for having the pictures of nudity and videos of young males on his county-issued taxpayer-sponsored computer.
Sir, could you please give us your position on this issue? I'm not interested in you making personal attacks on individuals or anybody else. It has nothing to do with the topic at hand.
Well, it has to do with nudity, which was the cause of his arrest and subsequent loss of his license to do his practice of law. So the question tonight is, are these sculptures of nude people and so forth offensive? This statement is from George Maron's Wikipedia page, which states that the Baroque, that is, the foundation of his art is an integration of Baroque dramatic art with subsequently powerful sensuality and a subtle sense of perverseness, unquote. That's on Wikipedia on his page. So therefore, George Maron's Wings of Greenville marginalizes women as depicted by the naked woman slipping away. It's one of those pictures, and then the naked one.
Somebody asked you that question before you go further. That picture you just showed, what is that picture?
This is the picture that's one of the sculptures.
Where, and where is that?
Well, it's actually the backside of what is, what's on Greenville.
Where is it? Where is it?
It's actually on the Wings of Greenville website, only you don't see that part. The cameraman.
Where is that piece of sculpture?
Well, it's part of the ones listed on.
Where is it?
It's in the Grady Falls area, that's my knowledge.
No, no, sir. No, sir. Where is it? Where is it?
Is it Peace Center? I'm not sure.
The Peace Center Lobby.
Okay, well, that's still a public place, right?
No, it's not. It's a private nonprofit company, organization. It is not on public property. It is not on public property. And it's not in Falls Park. And do you know what that piece is? Have you ever heard of Leonardo da Vinci?
Well, I did a, yeah, I know about it.
He did The Last Supper.
Did he do this?
And he did that.
Well, this is.
It's a Leonardo. It's called Vitruvius Man. It's one of the great works of Renaissance art, and that's a rendition of Vitruvius Man.
Well, I don't mean to sound argumentative or anything like that, but it's actually on George Maron's website.
It is.
It's actually on the Wings of Greenville's website too. But let me finish. My time, I would like to get my time back.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
I'd like to get my time back, because that was part of.
I'm not giving your.
I'd like to get my time back.
Thank you. Mr. Heather.
Well, I'd like to get my time back, because I was told that would be uninterrupted time.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And so.
But I do think you should know where these things are before you come out and tell us what you don't like. It makes me wonder if you stole them.
Okay, I need my 30 seconds back, please. So this one here is actually one that's in Display 2, which marginalizes women with this woman, naked woman slipping away, but I thought the purpose of Women's Liberation Suffrage Movement, as well as the Me Too Movement, was being dealt a setback by this male sexualizing women sculpture. Can anybody say woke? So the point of this history lesson is detailing the bad history of Greenville's leaders favoring immorality, communism, sexualizing of women, public display of male genitalia, and government-sponsored idolatry always produces the same rotten fruit as other countries that have fallen. So my point is, so instead of going by just Ms. Dow and a few others who are board members that sponsored this art, we want a full council vote tonight.
Obviously, we don't see it that way. You obviously see things that other people don't see.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Elizabeth Scott.
Hi, Elizabeth Scott, 45 East Tallulah Drive of Greenville, South Carolina. Yes, I live right off of Augusta Street, so the city is my stomping ground. I raise my children coming downtown to Greenville, coming to see the Shakespeare festivals, spending time doing birthday parties, you know, having a dozen kids dropped off at Mellow Mushroom to have pizza. We would go chase the little statues of mice all around the city. We would see the statues of historical figures who were dressed in suits and very mature and exactly what we wanted to be. But never did I have to encounter a partially dressed or undressed figure with a bird mask and wings that I would have to answer for to little eight, 10, 12-year-old girls that I was toting all over the city. Never did they have to go home to their moms and ask about these strange things. I didn't take them anywhere where they would see anything inappropriate, you know? I came here, it was hard after that last one. I came here to tell you thank you for not giving our city tax dollars to that bank and to ask you to please remove them. I still want them removed. It was hard to hear all of that and then say thank you, but I still say thank you, please. I don't want my tax money going to something that I don't think represents Greenville, South Carolina. I don't think it represents the upstate. I see this, last year it was drag queens talking to our children in libraries. And I just want to ask you if Greenville has left me behind. Do I still represent Greenville? Long Branch Baptist is my church. I met Lily in there. Yes, I happen to be a Republican. Do I represent Greenville? Am I still Greenville? Because I feel like Greenville might have left me behind, and so I would ask you to please remove these statues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This. Deborah, Deborah Lake-Mori. Evelyn MacLeod. Yeah. It's a long walk. Sorry about that.
Okay.
You state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Evelyn MacLeod. I live on One Barber Court, Taylor, South Carolina. Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn MacLeod. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speak here today. I am first-generation Mexican-American. I've been welcomed by Greenville. I had no issues representing myself, my raza, or my culture. I'm here to discuss my opposition of the statue exhibit of the Wings of the City. I've heard that from Adela Mendoza, the executive director of the Hispanic Alliance, say, "This world-class exhibit celebrates the global spirit of the upstate, symbolizing human connection across distance and the role of art as a universal language. There is no human connection in inanimate objects. It comes from the display of warm smiles and an offering hand of help, both which I have received here from Greenville, South Carolina." In a statesman article based in Texas from February 14, 2019, by Susan Major Davis, the artist Jorge Marin is quoted, "To me, art is an exorcism. That lets my demons, fantasies, and ideals come out. I like there to be a feeling of restlessness," he said. "If you go away with an unease of sensation, I'm okay with that. That's because my work isn't meant to calm the waters or spirits. It's meant to stir them up. I'm an avid runner, and I enjoy long walks with the family at the Falls Park. I've not taken my children to Falls Park, because these statues do not represent Mexico Lindo that I know. How do I explain to them that Gravillians see Mexicans as something to be gawked at in the way that they have seen indigenous people as savages? How do I explain to them that they are seen as naked, unable to communicate, as something subhuman? Is that what Gravillians view as Mexican culture? In Mexico, our culture is family-centered. It's surrounded at the table with delicious food, duelotes, super tias. We protect each other. We welcome and offer hospitality. We always offer our best in everything we do, not our personal demons. Leave a person anyplace better than you found it. That's what my abuela taught me. And that's how, that's how much we have in common with South Carolinians. When I take my family to Falls Park, we do not want to experience restlessness, but a renewed mind, soul, and body, especially having to say goodbye to family who we could not bring with us from 2020, from the battle lost to cancer, COVID, and heart failure. When I go to Falls Park, I want to feel restored and healed. I thought Falls Park was about championing for cancer survivors and their story of overcoming. Thank you. Viva la raza, and God bless America."
You don't. If there's, yeah, no, Ms. Kronberger.
My name is Melissa Kronberger. I live at 620 Halton Road, Apartment 12203 in Greenville. Mr. Bresington is my councilperson, and I want to thank you for your time the other day or last week. For the sake of the future of the city and the great nation that I love, I gather my courage to stand before you and speak. I've never done this before. So I ask you, let you know that I will let my words be few. Absolute socialism and the destruction of the Constitution and the American way of life is at our door. We have taken God out of the public square and out of the public school, and I'm so grateful that we stand in here and pray and say the Pledge of Allegiance, because that's not done in every public school in America. We have immersed ourselves in things that were once called bad, and we now call them good. Decision-making in many cities is beginning to mimic decisions made in wrecked cities where I grew up, under District 43 of California, where Maxine Waters was my representative, and wrecked cities in District 12 of California, represented by Nancy Pelosi. Is the Wings of Art exhibit genuinely just art, something to be enjoyed? I will read a few of the Zionist Communist goals takeover of America, which were read on January 10, 1963, in the United States Senate and House. Infiltrate churches and replace revealed religion with social religion. Discredit the Bible and emphasize the need for intellectual maturity, which does not need a religious crutch. Eliminate prayer or any phase of religious expression in schools on the grounds that it violates the principles of separation of church and state. Discredit the American Constitution by calling it inadequate, old-fashioned, out of step with modern needs, a hindrance to cooperation between nations on a worldwide basis. Discredit the American founding fathers, present them as selfish aristocrats who have no concern for the common man. Belittle all forms of American culture and discourage the teaching of American history on the grounds that it's only a minor part of the big picture. And here's the few that I'm really most concerned about in this issue, numbers 22 to 25. Continue discrediting American culture by degrading all forms of artistic expression. Eliminate all good sculpture from parks and buildings. Substitute shapeless, awkward, and meaningless forms. Control art critics and directors of art museums, quote-unquote, "Our plan is to promote ugliness, repulsive, meaningless art." Eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press. And the last one I read from this list that you can find, break down all cultural standards and morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and television. I cannot speak for anyone else in the room other than myself.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gibbs, but thank you very much. Ms. Gibbs. Gibbs? Walsh? You, Ms. Gibbs, or Ms. Walsh? Okay, thank you. And you're from Simpsonville?
Yes, my name is Barbara Gibbs, and I live at 901 Barrett Drive in Simpsonville, South Carolina.
In Simpsonville.
And I have lived in Greenville all my life, and I'm proud to be a Southerner. I'm proud of my heritage of the South. And I do not want my tax dollars to go to the City of Angels sculptures by Jorge Maron. Now, this man said, now, this is what he said, "Art is an exorcism that let out the demons and fantasies out." Well, that's not South Carolina. These neat statues are a discredit and lowering our Christian values, standards, and morals, and these statues are promoting pornography. I do not want my grandchildren and my nieces and nephews to be exposed to these demonic-looking statues. This is not what Greenville, South Carolina is. And we need to promote family-oriented art. People are leaving the big cities, big cities, and coming where, to Greenville, South Carolina. Why? Because we are moral. We have Christian values. And because we stand up for what we believe in. Yes, we do. We are Christians, and it's time, the Bible was taken out of the school, and now it's time for we stand up for what we believe in. And like I said, the people are leaving for the big cities, come to Greenville, South Carolina, because of its Southern charm and its Christian values. This kind of art is communist-approved, and it promotes pornography. Statues of this kind should be located where there are not modern children to be exposed to nude statues. Art should be for everyone. It should be, it's a person's expression. I mean, we are the Bible Belt. People are coming from New York. They're coming from California. Why? Because they have all this radical left. And it's time for us people as Christians and Republicans to stand up for what we believe in. And it's time that we take a stand, and I want the statues, I don't want my money be paid for this. I'm a Christian, and I'm a grandmother. What would your grandparents say to you if they come in here, or your great-grandparents? What would they say to you about these statues? What would they say to you? What would they say to you?
Thank you very much.
I say that, say, we don't want them in South Carolina.
I think they would say those are extraordinary works of art. And, and, and let me assure you that your tax dollars, that your tax dollars have not gone to these statues, so you can rest assured.
Let me tell you.
Ms. Walsh? Ms. Walsh?
I don't want them in South Carolina.
Please sit down. Will the police, will the police, thank you very much. Ms. Walsh, is that you?
Hello, I'm Edna Walsh, and I am a resident at two hundred Durness Drive in Simpsenville.
In Simpsenville.
And I frequent Greenville probably every day.
Thank you.
I became a resident of Simpsenville in October twenty twenty. I retired as a school counselor of a New Jersey elementary-level public school on September first, twenty twenty. I can confidently tell you, based on that profession, that we have a morality crisis. The span of my profession includes twenty-one years in the public school system, and prior to that, I was an emergency room crisis counselor, a drug and alcohol rehab counselor, and I had a private practice working with children, adolescents, and teens. And I also worked on the unit of a psychiatric hospital as a mental health therapist. Working in the public school with children and families over the past twenty-one years, I have witnessed the negative effects of violent video games, the every-child-get-a-trophy syndrome, the developmentally inappropriate shows, inappropriate movies, inappropriate commercial song lyrics, social media forums that are robbing children of their innocence, and in some cases tormenting them with fear, panic, and confusion. You see, once a child sees an image, whether in a photo, film, or sculpture, that negatively affects them, that image cannot be removed from their memory. Moving forward from that moment of visual exposure, the negative effects can only be managed. It, however, is a memory forever to be with that child. As a school counselor, I facilitated children who were traumatized by inappropriate exposure to sexually explicit materials or explicit horror. Every day, there are numerous opportunities for children to sadly be robbed of their innocence. As a school counselor, I witnessed consequences to children when they are not protected from visual exposure and from experiences they are not emotionally mature to handle. Children have to be protected. The morality crisis I refer to did not happen overnight. Please do your part to keep this out of our public square. On a personal note, when I weighed the pros and cons of moving to South Carolina from New Jersey, I was influenced by how family-friendly every place seemed. I remember like it was yesterday coming to Greenville for the first time and feeling like I was in a Hallmark movie. The positive quotes on the sidewalks, the beauty my family and I were surrounded by, it is a very special city. Please don't ruin that. From my point of view as a new person on the block and comparing it to what I left in New Jersey, the ambiance of Greenville is one that I am proud to be a part of. This display, I believe, would contaminate that, or has. These sculptures look dark and evil. I believe in the First Amendment, however, there are restrictions. There has to be a standard in the public square against obscenities. In the opening prayer, we pray to be pleasing to God. These sculptures, I can confidently say, are not pleasing to God. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your work in the public schools. Ms. Saravia? Have time for, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I told you I'd get you in.
I appreciate you allowing me to speak today, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jessica Saravia. I live at one fifteen Atherton Way in Greer. I do want to address what you mentioned earlier, that a lot of people are upset over this. You mentioned that there are different points of view, and we need to respect each other's point of view. And I think respecting each other's point of view is not allowing these statues to be in a public, shared place. It's more than just, do you like the statues or not? There are people with moral conviction against this that are being forced to be there and see it. And it's, that's what I'm hoping for when it comes to respect, is making sure that these public places are family-friendly. Family-friendly is good for everybody. And you mentioned that there were a lot of different groups that approved of these statues. You, well, I was told the Hispanic Alliance was the applicant, and they brought it up to the Arts and Public Places Commission. I was told that unanimously recommended approval. Then a city council member told me that they voted, that you guys voted for it, though there's been conflicting things on that. And then, then that all of these companies have approved of the statues as well, so all these separate groups. But I looked up the Hispanic Alliance, and they have a city council member on their board. They have those companies that you mentioned, Michelin, Bond Scors, Furman, on their board. So when you say, hey, there's all these separate groups that approve, really what I'm hearing is, we brought this before ourselves. We approved it, and we put it up and paid for it. And I don't think that is considering the other group that you're saying should be respected in their view. And I also read the puff piece on the city website saying that there's an overwhelming majority of people who love it. And I was looking at the stat, the statistics that they were using. They said five hundred thousand Facebook impressions. But I looked up what a Facebook impression is, and it just means that somebody scrolled on their phone, and it was on there. But there's no way to know whether somebody actually looked at it or not, and there's no way to tell if it's positive or negative. And it could be, how many posts did you guys put up? So it could be me looking at every single post. I could be fifty of those impressions. And so, and I was negatively impressed. So I just want to bring that all up to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll clarify on that. So Ms. Saravia makes a good point, and I will clarify that because you weren't here last week. She is correct. We did not take a formal vote on it. A misuse of a verb on my part, Ms. Saravia. This council supported that exhibit overwhelmingly, and I trust continues to support it. The statues aren't going anywhere, as far as I'm concerned. But I would like to speak. I will speak, I will speak towards your comments last week.
Hold it. We shouldn't allow people to...
No, it's not gonna apply.
I appreciate, I appreciate everybody being here. And the public comment period is really the most valuable we have. Excuse me, I'm speaking. I'm still speaking. I'm still speaking on what I want to speak. Thank you. I really appreciate that this council provides the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate everybody who took the time to come into town to speak and adhere to the rules of our council. I do think it's important for us to reiterate that our council priorities include a policy of diversity and inclusivity, which, no, they do, and that's in print. That being said, that being said, as leaders, our priorities drive our budget and drive our policy. That being said, it is never acceptable, ever, to disparage a group in these chambers. I do not disparage any of you for speaking. I have children, I have a daughter your age probably, that wouldn't have had the courage to come speak. But when you disparage and malign the LGBTQ community consistently as you have, it doesn't, and that's why we shouldn't be doing it when we speak. So therefore, I ask that you respect all groups. We've had some people say they came to Greenville. I came to Greenville. From that big city. And I came because I recognize the diversity and inclusivity that this city prided itself upon. And I, like you, am a Christian. So I thank all of y'all for recognizing the things we have in common, the things we differ on, and being respectful of everyone.
It is...
Thank you.
Mayor Lee? We do have one other member of the audience that has asked to speak, claims that she did sign up, and Ms. Heather Frederick, if you'd entertain her for three minutes. Oh, okay.
Thank you. I would like to thank each one of the Greenville City Council members for letting me speak tonight. Let me share with you three reasons I am opposed to the seven-foot-tall Wings of Greenville naked men statues currently being displayed in downtown Greenville. In God's Holy Word, the Bible, and the Book of Isaiah five twenty, we are reminded, "Woe to them that call good evil and evil good, that put darkness for light and light for darkness. Even before God took coats of animal skins as a covering for Adam and Eve because of their sin in the Garden of Eden, they knew they needed a covering for their nakedness and made themselves coverings of fig leaves. God, our Creator, knows what is best for us and how to protect us. The first reason why I object to the naked Wings of Greenville statues is because they are pornographic. The FBI states that porn is found in eighty percent of the scenes of violent sex crimes or in the homes of the offender. Police officers say that porn use is one of the most common profile traits of serial murderers and rapists. Revelation twenty-one verse eight further describes and warns us against the lifestyle of horish behavior and sorcery. It says that "all they shall have their part in the lake, which burneth with fire and brimstone, which is the second death, looking at porn or pornographic images in the form of pictures or statues that can lead a person down in a moral pathway that will destroy them, their family, their community, and their nation." These Wings of Greenville are a detriment to the pure family life that the Greenville community has enjoyed for centuries. The second reason why I object to these naked Wings of Greenville statues is that they display satanic ideology. A local upstate electrician, Mike Griffin, informed me of the occultic ties of these statues. Quote, "I looked at the photos. They are all occultic in nature. The bird bill on each character resembles some of the occult time during the Black Plague era. There were these types of beaks to scare away evil spirits of the plague. The more occult and symbology are the winged demons sitting on top of the world, and the universal man symbol is right out of occult symbology. In some cases, it represented the rebel angel Lucifer." Galatians five nineteen and twenty-one teach us, "Now the works of the flesh are these: adultery, fornication, idolatry, witchcraft, strife, seditions, heresies, and being murderers, drunkenness. These will not inherit the kingdom of God." The third reason why I object to these naked Wings of Greenville statues is because they are harmful and offensive to children. Focus on the family. According to them, they say that porn leaves kids incredibly stunted in their growth and maturity and enslaved. The distortions created by porn are said to be a factor in fifty-six percent of divorces. Matthew eighteen six through fourteen warns us about not offending little children. I'm calling for the immediate removal of these satanic, immoral, and harmfully offensive naked Wings of Greenville statues for the betterment of the Greenville community. Thank you.
Thank you for your preaching. And thank you, thank, thank you very much for those comments. And we hope the public will continue to enjoy this wonderful work of art, whether it's in the Peace Center or across Falls Park.
Point of order. I don't think that we should have all this hollowness.
We're not, we're not, yeah, we don't, you may perhaps do that in some other elected bodies and chambers. We don't conduct ourselves that way in Greenville City Council. We just don't. So thank you for being there. That's all we have, that's all we have to say to you. Mr. Jack Logan, you're up next, Jack.
I'm Jack Logan. I live at five zero five one Old Augusta Road, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm here tonight to talk about the incidents on Verde Boulevard from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one. Back in two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, there was two men that lost their lives due to high police chases. They lost their lives on Verde Boulevard. Once, in two thousand fifteen, a police car was stolen. On two ninety-one, it ended up crashed in on Verde Boulevard. And on two nineteen, a police chase, Mr. Mayor, that led to a wreck right there in the circle there on Verde Boulevard.
Remember that.
Okay, I'm gonna move on down. In February of this year, a male went to apartment complex on Verde Boulevard. He shot a female, I do believe, a number of times, and he shot a male. That male got away on Verde Boulevard, went up Lawrence Road. He ended up in, near the West Greenville. But later on, he did turn himself in. Then, as all you know, I've sent your emails and emails about a black male that entered a liquor store on Verde Boulevard. The black male never did anything that the police department charged him with, eventually, which I requested through the Freedom of Information Act, to show he never put his hands in his pockets. He never said one word. Y'all are the seven jurors. This city manager is the judge. But I'm gonna prove this case to y'all. Then, on Mother's Day, the night before Mother's Day, I put on Facebook, usually through the years, the night before Mother's Day, there'd be a shooting in a nightclub. It didn't happen. It happened on Verde Boulevard. And knowing and reading for Ms. Oliver, the mother of her son, that the police department had not even contacted her, gave her the answers. Mr. Mayor, we stood on Augusta and Ferris, handed out hundreds of Mother's Day balloons. I never would have done that if I had known Ms. Oliver had lost her son on Mother's Day. The police department must be proactive. We've had people, a lady get killed, or a driver going down the road drunk, a man beat down on Main Street. This city manager and the police department, they're in the right of all of this, they think. We go downtown every weekend. We witnessed just this past weekend. Everybody in Shark is drunk. Everybody in City Tavern drunk. Those people, I don't care whether they're black, white, or Hispanic, gets in their vehicles and drive away, endangering innocent people in the city, the county, and the state of South Carolina. I ask you again, I like the chief. He need to be monitored or look for someone else. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dad. Ms. Lisa McDonald? Lisa McDonald? Okay. And Mr. Bruce Wilson? Now Bruce, now Bruce, Mr. Wilson, you're taking up your three minutes, man.
Well, he's here, I gotta catch him. You know, when he's out in Washington, I gotta catch him. There's another statue in downtown we also need to get rid of.
I thought of that. It's kind of ironic, isn't it?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak about, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it is fourteenth Freestone Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm here to speak about the Public Safety Citizen Review Board. Mr. Mayor, as you know, I, along with other members of the Black Lives Matter movement, marched in protest to ensure that this type of board would be established in the city of Greenville. And we were pleased to see the development of this board. However, I was disheartened when I learned firsthand that this board is actively violating participants who come before the board constitutional rights, namely, there are Fourteenth Amendment rights, specifically equal protection under the law. It appears that several board members, including the chair, does not understand that they are not an extension of the Greenville City Police Department. And at all times, especially when dealing with complaints from the public in regards to the Greenville City Police Department, that they must remain neutral. I'm sad to report to this council that this is not happening, and I have video evidence to prove such. The chair of this board was unequivocally resilient in ensuring her inability not to be neutral when dealing with a case involving myself. I even had a board member to insinuate because I am a large black man that I cannot sustain pain, which is racist but also absurd. And finally, the most egregious assault on democracy came from a board member who accused me of violating the law, even though I had not been charged with a criminal offense, and even though I was not before the board. and even though I was not before the board for a criminal offense. This board member, with his flippant disregard for the Constitution, forgot that even an individual who is charged with a criminal offense is still presumed innocent until a jury of his peers finds him guilty. This particular board member proceeded to become the judge and the jury, because even, he even believed he had the ability to hand a sentence to me, even though I was not before him or the board as a suspect. Again, disregarding that I was before him under the umbrella of equal protection, which the Fourteenth Amendment affords me. However, this board is an extension of the city of Greenville. Therefore, I am asking council to immediately disband this board and replace all members with individuals that understand and appreciate the fact that this board should remain neutral when dealing with complaints from the public in regards to city police department. I hope that my request would not go unheard, as I believe I have the right through Black Lives Matter, fighting injustice together, and as a, as a harmed person to seek legal remedy, as my rights were violated by an extension of an entity that was part of the city of Greenville.
Wrap it up.
I am asking you, Mr. Mayor, to please disband this board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we now have our public hearing adoption of the
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Twenty-two. Mr. Manager, you, uh, is Matt coming up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to open the public hearing for the adoption of the city budget and capital improvement program. I think a moment of indulgence just to thank a few folks for their involvement in the development of these documents. First, to city council members for developing the priorities upon which we base the budget document, to the manager and his staff for setting the framework for us to build the document around, for the department heads and their staff who put together the programs and proposals that we ultimately brought before you, and for OMB Christina Junker, who's here in the audience with her and her staff, our budget administrator, for all their work on putting this together. We've had three public, three public workshops on the budget before this evening, April 12th, April 26th, and then earlier this afternoon on May 24th. The proposed budget before you all is a total of $248,521 across all funds. And, um, we will open it now for public comments.
Okay, thank you. And we, of course, spent the first hour or two on the budget workshop and got all the highlights of the budget at that time, including the proposal for the $32 million neighborhood improvement infrastructure bond, among other things. So at this time, I guess there's no other, no other comments to be heard on that. We proceed on then to appointments. I believe we have one tonight, just Richland County Advisory Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, you, yeah, it's public hearing time. Okay. I'm so sorry. Okay.
I'll be brief. I'm just here to represent both affordable housing, the Housing Trust Board, I'm on that, as well as the steering committee. I want to thank you first for making affordable housing a priority, and most importantly, with regards to the budget, putting muscle behind it and putting some real dollars towards that. I think it's well, it's long overdue, much needed, and we just truly appreciate your commitment to that effort. Look forward to continuing to work with you closely, make a difference. As John Lomas mentioned in his report, it's great to have this exciting economic development, but with all the energy and, and emphasis on Greenville becoming a place to remote, work remotely, more and more people are moving here, which means the cost of housing continues to rise. So affordable housing is becoming even more critical than it has been in the past. So with that, I just thank you so much, and we continue our work together. Thanks.
I apologize for rushing ahead there. I was, yeah, I was keeping an eye on Brian, I thought he was gonna come up and speak, so I, but he did not. No, you're not gonna do yourself any favors by speaking at this time.
He's very shy, so I had to like that.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay. Thank you, Diane. Thank you very much. Uh, we have one appointment tonight, the Cemetery Advisory Committee. Who has that appointment? Okay.
I would like to, um, recommend Mr. William O'Neill for the Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee to complete, um, the term, uh, unex- term of one of the uh, members of the, of the committee. Mr. O'Neill is not able to come this evening, but I think he is online if we're interested in speaking to him, but but Mr. O'Neill is not here. But I would like to recommend him for, he has a lot of, uh, experience on this particular board, and he was willing to come out of retirement to return to the Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee, so I recommend him for this board.
Okay, Mr. O'Neill is, is so nominated. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He is so named. Uh, consent agenda. Who's got that? Motion.
Mayor, you have three items before you, 11A, B, and C. If we have a motion in a second, please, sir. So move.
Second. Okay. Court call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. It is so approved. Uh, new business 15A.
An ordinance to abandon a portion of Eleanor Street.
Motion approved. Your second.
Second.
You wanna hear from Clint? You do or don't?
I do.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, members of council, this is a, a petition from the Greenville Housing Fund to abandon an unimproved portion of Eleanor Street. Uh, this was presented to you at the May 10th council meeting for a public hearing. And, um, this is a petition we received from Greenville Housing Fund. Uh, we do not know exactly what their plans are for this site yet. We did receive several comments from the neighborhood regarding concerns for stormwater, access, what type of development would be proposed there, conformance to the Nickel Town Neighborhood Master Plan. All those things will be looked at as we move forward with Greenville Housing Fund on the development plans for this site. But, um, the item before you is for the abandonment of the unimproved right of way.
Okay. That's why I wanted to be sure that they had been discussion with the community. Thank you so much.
Okay, we had a motion in a second. Any further questions? Court call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance to appropriate $55,686,640 for the fiscal year 2122 capital budget for the fiscal year 2122 and fiscal year 2526 capital improvement program.
Motion. Move, approve. Second. And second. Further discussion?
I have an amendment to offer.
Oh, is it with the time you're gonna do that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, would now be the appropriate time?
Yeah, I guess it is. I'm looking at the manager, is it appropriate time?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, motion to amend the proposed capital improvement program capital budget by modifying the schedules in attachment A and B to reflect the proposed five-year affordable housing funding proposal totaling $10,500,000 in city funding. This action does not change the total proposed FY22 capital budget, but it will increase, increase the total proposed FY22 through '26 CIP funding from $128,205,897 to $133,705,897.
I second.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, now for the ordinance as amended. 15B, court call the roll.
Yes, Mayor, and who gave me the second on the amendment? Thank you, sir.
Gibson did. Okay.
Ordinance says amended. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to appropriate $386,752 in the miscellaneous grants fund to recognize CARE, CARES Act reimbursement from Greenville County for COVID-19 expenditures.
So, motion, please, is there a second? Take, motion second. Discussion. Court call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Passes 15D.
An ordinance to provide for the adoption of a city operating budget execution in effect for the fiscal period July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, declaring certain tax increment finance revenues net of debt service payments surplus, authorizing the termination of tax increment financing districts and other matters related thereto.
Motion, please. Motion second. Any further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Sees first reading approval, 16A.
A resolution to approve a law enforcement assistance, support, and jurisdiction agreement between the City of Greenville Police Department and the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department.
Move to approve. Motion is a second. Go ahead, Chief. Yeah. Chief can say a comment on this.
Sir, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Thompson.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is an agreement we've signed several. This will be our third signing with Myrtle Beach. It allows us to go down and assist them on large weekends where they have a big crowd and need assistance, and also allows them to come to the city and help us. All expenses that the officers incur, including their meals, their lodging, and their salaries, are all paid by Myrtle Beach.
Yeah. And in the last three years, how often has that been utilized?
It's usually utilized just on a couple of weekends when they really have an influx of people and they are unable to handle it. And those, all of those weekends, they require assistance from all over the state to come in and help them.
Like bike weekend?
Yes, sir.
Um, I assume this is similar to the one that we approved with the county and the sheriff's office?
That's correct.
And, and my only concern would be, just like in the last one, we have done a very good job of establishing very good guidelines for our policemen, so I would like for us to bring in other policemen who will not be subject to those as a rare exception and not the more.
Yeah. It's a very legitimate concern. All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. 16B.
A resolution approving and authorizing the housing authority for the city of Greenville, South Carolina to issue multifamily revenue bonds within the unincorporated areas of Greenville County.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. 16C.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Green Finney LLP for auditing services for fiscal years 2022 through 2026.
Motion, please. Second. You can't do it simultaneously, but, uh, no other, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. 16D.
A resolution authorizing a lease purchase agreement, series 2021, in the principal amount of not exceeding $1,125,000 relating to the financing of equipment for municipal purposes, authorizing the execution and delivery of various documents, including the lease agreement and other matters related thereto.
Motion from Ms. Fleming, any second?
Second.
Second, discussion?
I had a quick question. Sorry.
Question.
Quick question. The Quint truck, where's the Quint truck gonna live? I read about this and I just, that, oh. Sorry, just a quick answer.
Chief Kay is gonna get his, his stem.
Well, chief, next time, sit toward the front. You know? It'll be
It's really just a point of curiosity.
Yeah. Did anyone time my response, Tom?
Pardon me? No, don't.
That's true, that was a poor response.
Uh, this will replace the Quint at Station Five off of Pleasantburg.
Okay. Thank you. Long walk back.
But you might wanna hang around in case there's another question. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it, and mayor stains from that one. 16E.
A resolution to certify 401 Repper Mountain Road as an abandoned building site.
Okay. So move. Motion second.
Second.
All right, you want a, is a presentation on this, Mr. Manager? If you'd like one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Anybody want one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. 16F.
A resolution to award $14,000 in the, in funding received from the Greenville Zoo Conservation Fund from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, to six designated local and international conservation programs.
Okay. So moved. So moves their second.
Second.
You got, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, thanks very much. Mr. Manager, got something? Just real quick, Mayor, I'm not gonna go into a lengthy staff report tonight, but I would like to call on Chief Thompson.[1706.71]